I'd like to call the October 20th Plan Commission Study Session to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free and just as for all.
Mr. Imig, would you please call roll?
Bill Jarvis.
Here.
Miles Long. Tom Corus.
Here.
Chris Rack.
Here.
Bob Kocan.
Here.
Gary Imig present. Tom Anderson.
Here.
First item, re-subdivision of Lot 1 Von Tobal addition, Lot 3, general location, 751 Lincoln Highway, re-subdivision of Lot 1 Von Tobal addition, Lot 3, petitioner, Family Express Group, Pete Andro, Vice President Development, and Patrick Lipp, General Counsel, represented by Weezer and Wiley, LLP, Attorney James L. Weezer, and DVG Team Inc., James Huss, Jr., PE, requesting a US-30 commercial corridor overlay District Development Plan Review. Good evening.
So my name is, as you mentioned, Patrick Lipp. Mr. Weezer could not be here this evening. He had a medical issue he needed to tend to, nothing overly serious, so you're stuck with me, at least for this first planning session. I'm joined this evening, as you mentioned, James Huss of DVG Engineering, and Peter Andreu, who works for Family Express as our Director of Development here. Because I initially wanted to kind of, I'll use the term tee this up, and then I'll turn it over to the expert, James, to kind of go through some of the technical aspects of this for your consideration. And so, as mentioned, from Family Express's perspective, we're looking to essentially accomplish two things with the Plan Commission. First, as you mentioned, to subdivide the property, the former Von Tobal lumber location there, and secondly, to get your approval on the site plan to allow Family Express to move forward with its plans for a convenience store and fueling station. As to the other two, because again, there'll be three lots proposed subdivision, as to lots 2 and 3, at this point, we do not have any particular plans as to what those sites would be. It would be guessing, thank you, that's the larger view there. It would be guessing as to what the building to the west or the area to the south would be, and so our request of the Plan Commission would be is to approve of the dividing or subdividing of those, and that at some point in the future, either Family Express or some other potential developer would come before you with a plan that you could then react to and decide whether or not the proposed use was appropriate or not. We've had a great opportunity to talk to town staff and receive their input concerning our proposed use of the property, particularly with the use of the convenience store and fueling station. There's been some discussions, as I'm sure you're aware, as relates to Klein Avenue. We're aware that there is some existing challenges for vehicle traffic there, and then moreover, when our development comes in, it certainly will not, at itself, make it better. We're not necessarily sure how it might contribute negatively, but in our conversations with town staff, there was a recommendation to do essentially two things. One was donate right-of-way to allow for a future expansion of Klein Avenue, and secondly, for Family Express to take on the responsibility and the obligation with the town's direction to expand Klein Avenue. And again, James, the engineer, will talk more as to that, but that's something that Family Express is willing to do there. So with that, unless you have any preliminary questions for me, I'd like to introduce James Huss and have him go through the plan just up there and talk more specifically about the subdividing and then the site plan, and more importantly, the potential improvements to Klein Avenue.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to, you see the site plan in front of you, one of the first things that drove this development is obviously Von Tobal's was here, and there's a substantial amount of infrastructure that is still usable on the property. One of the first things Family Express brought to me was two iterations, one to leave what is a gap now on this plan as part of the building and do a partial demolition with a parking lot towards the back, towards the waterway. We soon discovered that the Von Tobal building was constructed in pieces. It's actually the buildings you see here, and then at a certain point in time, Von Tobal's basically closed in the gap between those buildings, and what appears to be a real building from the outside that we see it today actually wasn't functional to leave in place. There was a tremendous amount of slope on the floor inside the building, and it just couldn't be retrofitted as to part of what was otherwise two real buildings. So the decision was made, from a marketability standpoint, is hey, we can remove that connector, find a way to work the site around it, create a parking area between the two buildings, and basically remove the connector, leaving the original three buildings that were on the property. So that's really what drove what you see in front of you here, and also kind of what drives the eventual three-lot subdivision and a plat that will be brought before you in future meetings. Obviously, first and foremost, Family Express, I mean, we know them, they're an Indiana brand, they will be in here, in the town of Shererville for years to come, as they are in surrounding communities. They only need about 9,000 square feet to operate their commercial, their convenience store and gas station. So that will be the furthest east, or basically the Von Tobal frontage that you see today. They'll be absorbing the first 9,000 square foot of that building, with the back half of that building to be marketed to a future user, obviously, something attractive that we, while we don't know yet, obviously something that the town of Shererville will want at this location. And conversely, the building to remain to the west, same thing. The goal is, first and foremost, to get Family Express up and operating, and then to market these properties and truly transform this corner. So the core site plan components as it relates to Family Express is obviously, they're going to retrofit and completely rehab the front 9,000 square feet for their offerings of food and beverage sales. They'll obviously be installing a fuel can and underground storage tanks for the fuel, and they will also be installing a single bay car wash, which is the building you see in the south of this illustration. If we can jump back to the site plan. So once we brought that to town staff, the first thing we heard, we've had about two or three meetings with town staff, the first thing they brought to our attention, they said, you know, traffic on Klein Avenue southbound, particularly in the evening, coming from north of Route 30 is unacceptable, how do we fix that? And the first thing town staff brought to our attention was, well, we think Klein Avenue needs two lanes southbound. We've done some preliminary investigation, we've done traffic counts already, and we, very apparent that town staff was on to something. And then we were asked, how do we come back to make the site still work for Family Express and assist the problem that Shererville residents experience on a day-to-day basis? And we worked with Neil to identify some, call it leeway, because obviously, we're working with a Von Tobal building that isn't moving, it's there, and there's only a finite distance between, let's say, the front of the Von Tobal building and center of Klein Avenue. Klein Avenue is a challenging road to begin with, because it does have some slope east to west. I mean, the Family Express property has, I think, about 17 feet of fall from Klein Avenue to the creek, so there's a lot of topographic challenges. And as Patrick mentioned, we've kind of brainstormed a geometry that's going to allow us to slightly shift the median and skinny it up. Family Express proposes a five-foot right-of-way dedication as part of this project, and will be reflected on the plat of subdivision you will see in subsequent meetings. And we're going to carry two through lanes, and Family Express will perform this work as part of their development, that's our intent, two through lanes through the intersection, with the expectation that the town will take on the same improvements to the north leg of the intersection, more or less corresponding with when Family Express would be under construction, which is likely 2026. Now what that, when those two improvements are put in place, it's essentially going to allow twice as many motorists to cross 30 on every green light, so to speak, because that really was the choke point of why traffic backs up to the north, is that they only have, you can only push about 300 cars an hour through those green lights. By adding two through lanes, you instantaneously double that amount. I won't contend that it's still not, still won't be a busy intersection, after all, it is Route 30, and the town is well aware that it's the state's route, and there's far, far more cars on Route 30. But what it will do is eliminate the backups that stretch truly as far back as beyond where the new scooters is, on a everyday basis. I know Burr Street being closed is making it look a little worse than normal, but it's, the problem was very apparent, and we really think that this collaboration that I and Pete and Patrick have done with town staff can go a long way, and we hope the right-of-way dedication and the willingness to perform our half, so to speak, of the improvement will go a long way to solving a problem at this intersection that can be solved, because we really, we really don't have any leeway or leverage. We all know NDOT won't be taking Route 30 to three lanes in each direction anytime soon, but this is something we can help and are happy to incorporate into our plan. We made some slight site adjustments, kind of brought our curb line back to the west. It still works for the site, it's a little tighter than we would like, but if that's what it takes to get the towns' buy-in, we're happy to do that. Speaking of the greater subdivision, we do have a master plan for the site, which you can see here, but ideally, obviously, Family Express's first priority is demonstrating how attractive the front of the building will look, subdividing the property, which will then enable them to truly market the property, because it's, until certain things are real, it's hard to get buyers interested. But I think we've, I mean, I think the plan is good, the plan for Klein, as I've discussed with Neil, it does meet many of the recommendations of the state of Indiana when it comes to road design. We're dealing with the built environment, there's only so much you can change, and certain things you have to work around, and I do think the plan that we have, not just for the site, but for the improvements to Klein Avenue, truly make the best of a unique situation, so to speak. So while we don't have it illustrated, but we will when we come before you tonight, the three-lot subdivision will essentially bisect the west half of the property, kind of where that pink extension, which is a storm sewer line, that will separate, Lot 3 would be the building to the south, Lot 2 would be the building in the northwest, and the lot line between Lot 2 and Lot 1 intends to be about 10 feet east of the northwest building, because the parking between the buildings will need to be assigned to the west half of the main Von Tobal building to remain. We do expect that the plat will have a number of cross-parking and utility easements because of the uniqueness of the site. I think that's just something that comes with any time you're doing, we'll call it a property retrofit. So it will be a unique plat, but obviously, the subdivision process is so important, because again, it gives Family Express the confidence to market the property, because obviously, I know they, while this won't, this whole property won't redevelop overnight, the faster it can go to market, the faster hopefully this whole corner transforms into something different than it is today, and I think some of the users that'll be looking at this property will make this corner truly transformational, we know how visible it is in town. And I think the end result of having those two 30-facing buildings, just radically different uses, better uses, I think it's, I think it's a potential real win for Family Express and the town of Shererville. I'm going to try not to ramble too much, I think, unless I've missed something, we're happy to answer any and all questions Plan Commission's members have, so I think I'll take it back to you.
I've got a couple. So heading east on 30, they cut over, there's a right turn lane, which starts pretty much at the beginning of your property, isn't it?
Correct, yes.
Yeah. So then, you're going to dedicate property to put a second southbound lane on Klein, which would run up to the edge of, the end of your property also?
Correct. If you could see the striping illustration right where the cursor is, so where the skip dashes stop, that'll be two lanes, and then they have, there's the various design manuals, I won't bore anybody to death with, but it kind of dictates a distance that through the intersection, you have to carry the through lanes to be safe, and then also a distance that merge back has to happen.
Yeah, because you hit the roundabout.
Yes.
And it's one lane.
We have to get back to one lane before the roundabout.
Yeah, right.
We actually carried the arrangements actually a little further than the manual dictates, because this is a complicated area. We're carrying the two lanes all the way to the end of the right turn lane, and only starting the merge back there, and the distance that that merge takes place, no corners have been cut, it's over 300 feet long, which is the appropriate distance you should be merging back based upon the speed limit of Klein Avenue, excuse me.
So are you considering the convenience store or gas station, one lot, and cutting the building, the building in two?
No, so Lot 1 will, so Lot 1 will include the entirety of that building.
Okay.
So...
All right, I misunderstood, I thought you were...
No, the back, the back half of that building would obviously eventually be leased out to another user, but would still be remain under Family Express's ownership of Lot 1.
So, and with removing the connector of the building, that gives you more parking and...
Yes, because we do, Von Tobal was unique in that it was a lot of material storage. It was a very, very large buildings for not a lot of traffic, and when you're transforming the use, obviously, we don't know what the user is, but creating parking for any future use is almost going to be a higher need than Von Tobal.
Well, I think that goes back to the 60s of Shererville lumber, and then Von Tobal took it. Questions from board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jarvis?
This plan is far superior to what was brought to us the first time. I think the movement would be much better, Klein Avenue, that will help Klein Avenue. I had brought up in the last meeting, if you checked the minutes, about how tight it was and just turning, but this is far superior, good job.
Thank you.
Now, Lot 2 and Lot 3, those both are on the Turkey Creek side. Is that wiggly line, the line, but that, between what's going to be Building 1 and Building 2, is that wetland line there?
No, that is a little misleading, that is 500-year floodplain.
Okay.
The one to the west of the northwest building is 100-year floodplain, so we actually don't have any buildings in floodplain. We have, in our preliminary master planning, we are, obviously, there's still some steps to go and permitting associated with that work when it comes down the line. We're very confident that we won't have any, we'll have some reshaping back there, we will not have any filling in the floodplain, it's actually a cut.
So Building 1, Lot 1, will avoid that area?
Correct, so there'd be permitting steps for construction to take place on lots 2 and 3, but not for Lot 1. Lot 1 is entirely out of everything.
Other questions? Mr. Corus?
Two questions. First question, is there a similar building around us, like you were planning for Shererville? In other words, you know, a similar concept, that we can say, okay, this is what's going here? Because I know, I believe that the buildings are all different, your locations are sometimes different, correct?
So the color scheme you see...
Size-wise, colors, is there one close to us, Griffith, is that what you're anticipating, or the San Giro? And Lot 1 in Valpo is much bigger, right?
Hi, Tom. Peter Andreu. This is by far a larger store. We just redesigned our prototype, our typical building's around 4,500 square foot, 4,800 square foot. The new prototype, it's going up in St. John, 41 and 109th. By the end of this week, you should see the whole building wrapped, because it's modular. That new prototype is 5,800 square foot, just for the building alone. The inside will mimic what we're doing in the new prototype. The only reason this is much bigger is because the only way to subdivide the space is to go through column lines. So naturally, this is a much wider building, it's like 170 feet long, our typical prototype is 90, it's half of that. So we're using that space, we're creating a more inviting atmosphere for eating and that sort of, so this is much bigger, we don't have anything this size-wise, but the interior, the offerings will be identical to the stores.
A majority of your locations are, is it true to say that the majority of your locations are busiest in the morning, or is that not true?
I'm sorry?
Are busiest, or have...
Would have more traffic in the morning? Is that true to say?
It depends on location. Typically, the morning and the after-work is typically our busiest times, our peak hours.
And your hours would be 6 to 10, or, is that a 24-hour rate, if I recall?
No, I don't think this is 20, we only have like eight out of our 90 stores that are 24-hours. This would be likely 5 o'clock to capture the early traffic, and typically, it's either 11 or 12 at night.
Like Mr. Jarvis said, I too am grateful that you've redesigned and you've thought of different things here, but I have a question, and since we are honored to have the expertise of Neil here tonight, in the back on 77th, there is no way of putting an entrance back there, Neil? Is that, I'm sorry that I didn't go and look at it, even if I did go and look at it, I don't think, you know, that I would know that.
I believe you're correct with the bike trail that goes through that area and the limitations you have on rights-of-way, that I believe that's correct.
So in other words, there's not any possibility of you'd be ruining the bike trail, obviously?
And the connection of this property to that area, I don't believe is contiguous.
If memory serves me, the major remonstrance was all of the other activity that was going to happen on here. I don't think, I didn't believe at the time when it was first proposed, nor do I believe that the gas station per se would be that high of traffic that people were so concerned about. I think it's all of the other activity that would be happening, and the other buildings, so that's why I'm asking if there was another entrance or exit outside onto 77th Avenue, maybe would that help alleviate, like for the back two buildings, that those people would kind of use that instead of coming back onto Klein?
They don't own that property.
Well, who owns that property? We do, don't we? Doesn't the town? I mean, to help alleviate a traffic on Klein, or...
Well, you'd have to cross the bike trail.
That's what I'm saying.
But, yeah, I don't foresee, and another developer owns the property to the south, which would also...
Can you, wherever the cursor is, can you point out where 70, that 77th there?
It's way, yeah.
77th's back here.
Yeah, it's...
So there's, okay, okay.
More than, more than 500 feet, is...
I'm sorry, I thought it was all your property, I thought it was all Von Tobal, and then...
77th's way further south than that. It's off the screen, right?
Yeah, if...
No, I just, I understand that it's further south, but I thought that you, that you folks owned the property, obviously, and then that the town owned the rest, because in Griffith, they do that, they cut the bike, they cut the bike trail, and it's for traffic, but they just have stops there, and I thought if it was, if that was a way of getting more traffic flowing there, to be considered, but I guess it's not, so I will take back my idea.
Yeah, because you have, you have that, you have that whole other strip mall there with the cheesesteaks, social, the liquor store, that's all owned by someone else.
Oh, forgive me, I thought, I thought that you folks owned...
No.
Oh, okay.
It's just that flag shape, I think if you go to, maybe, no, that, do you have another site plan on there?
Can you go back to the aerial?
Right, that's, we consider that that blue shaded area, the flag shape, that's our property.
Okay, forgive me, and you don't, okay, all right, forgive me, I thought that you, that you folks owned the whole, whole thing there.
Mr. Corus?
Yes.
With them taking out that center point, the building to the west, well, all the vendors or users will probably exit using US-30, especially with them doing the lane there, because there's a curb cut there already, because a lot of the Trek bicycle store uses it, and I think that will accommodate what we're looking for, to move traffic faster out of there. So the west building and possibly the south building will be utilizing, I'm sure, the cut onto US-30 there.
I was just looking for any, you know, I think that it would benefit those, the other property as well, if we had access to 77th, but obviously, it's not going to happen, so...
Yeah, and then actually, on 77th is residential, there's homes start right after the roundabout, so you would have to go through...
In the beginning part, right, if I recall, right behind like social or something like that, you could have...
It's houses.
Those homes are right there, yeah.
That John Deere house is that close to here?
Yeah, it's right on the other side of that trail there.
Well, I just have to take a look, please forgive me, I thought, I'm just trying to come up with another exits, you know, like another exit for this property.
We like excesses, usually we're the ones that being restricted on excesses makes our... our.
And that's why I think it's great that you're removing the center part of that building. I think that's gonna work real well for you.
When we first came, that was a conceptual and we started looking and talking to the staff and everybody, you know, we start refining it and start tweaking it, so I, I think that the plan is definitely enhancement over the last.
Mr. Simstad, do you have any concerns or questions?
No, I, I definitely think that working with the staff on the iterations of the lane configurations has resulted in a much more beneficial opportunity for the town and the developer and, and with Andy Hansen working with Endot on the areas north of US 30 and the town doing those improvements to continue those two southbound lanes through the intersection and potentially doing some traffic signal mitigations with Endot, I think we'll probably be in a better situation than we were when this whole first started, talking with the developers to move traffic through there at a, at a higher rate.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to have to grant any variances or anything as far as landscaping and all that? Because a lot of that is already covered.
Well, I believe they're gonna, they're gonna have a landscape plan, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think they'll meet it, the, with that big of a property.
So with, on the, on the topic of landscaping amongst other variances, Denise has already reached out to me late last week. I think one of the, it, it sounds like we're receiving a positive reception here this evening. Our, our next steps would be to identify any variances we, that are gonna become associated with that three lot subdivision landscaping more, I mean, it's a retrofit site, it's, there's not a lot of green space. We're gonna obviously provide the best we can, but I, I won't claim to think there won't be a single one related to that amongst other things. So that, that's logically the next step. Obviously, we didn't want to file for those until we gauge the temperature of the plan commission.
I was just setting it out there so you could hear it because you got a lot blacktop there, so.
I think the one, the, another positive of this project, obviously, we're, we're again dealing with the built world, it's, we'll, we'll call it a retrofit, but the fun thing about retrofits is, is we're still making it better than it was, even if maybe it's not to the standard that the town would expect for a, a ground up remodel of a property.
Yeah, I, I like the plan, you know, especially adding the, the area on Klein, you know, to help traffic because when it comes to a public hearing, there's, there's gonna be remonstrators and, and their biggest thing is gonna be the traffic. And the fact that you're doubling the number of lanes, that's gonna go a long way. You know, you're, and with cutting that center section out, the movement around the property, I think is gonna be enhanced.
Yeah, I, before I decided to be a site designer, I was a transportation engineer and I can tell you that the, the plan from a, from a traffic perspective, the plan we have shown for this leg of Klein and then once the town completes the, the improvements to the north, it will be a noticeable difference in a positive direction.
Now, Klein Avenue will, will that, I know Endot's gonna have input, but would, Endot would not kibosh that, would they?
I can't obviously speak for Endot, but we are in the very early stages of coordinating all our efforts as with the developers with Endot to make sure that when this is done, the store's open, everything has been completed on both sides of US 30, that things are gonna be better than they are today by a significant margin.
Yeah, I, you know, I realize that there's nothing you can do on 30, but number one, you already have the right turn lane, which, you know, we would, we would want. I just, you know, trying to think if for some, would, would there be some reason Endot would say, eh, we don't want you to put a second lane there?
I don't know that within the town's right of way, they could prevent that.
Okay, that, that, yeah.
But it, it should be noted that we have to abut the state right of way with that additional work that the town would be doing as well as the developers. So Endot permits and review through their standard permitting process will absolutely be in the, in the works of this.
And we, and we do fully expect to provide that concurrence to the town before this is officially given the green light, but speaking from a, a traffic engineer perspective, I struggle to, I struggle to find any objection they could come with this plan. I mean, we can, we can move signal heads, so when there's, there's perfect place, but when you have a situation like this where US 30, the town has no say over.
Yeah.
And it's, and because it's, it's, it's the master of the universe and throughout the town and it's causing a problem in that our, our local traffic doesn't have enough time to get through, this is, this is the only mitigation measure and we're proposing to do exactly that.
Other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Anderson, just one quick one. Is there any, what's the thought about the three lanes going into one lane? Is it really three or will there be?
No, it's actually, it's actually two. The, the third lane you see is the right turn lane that exists today that will just be bumped a little wider out. That, that right, southbound right turn lane is already there today, so that lane would only be used by traffic entering Family Express or the gym.
They can't go further?
No.
They can't, they can't decide to bypass Family Express and go into that?
I can't 100% control driver behavior, but they are not supposed to do that.
Yeah, as I sat today at 30 and, 30 in Austin and a truck pulled in front of me into the left turn lane and then blew the red light to go straight. Yeah, you can't, you can't fix stupid. Yeah. But yeah, that, that, that ends right there, but, so, Mr. Simstad, the, where it converges back to one lane, there's enough distance in that for, to do that safely?
There, there is. It, it meets all of the generally accepted practices and, and to your, to your earlier point, as everything goes into what you wanna do to improve this intersection, unfortunately, one of the metrics that James and I could never quantify would be the stupidity factor that you just mentioned, so.
Yeah.
But based on what's been provided, I, I think this is making the best out of a, a challenging situation to provide a long-term improvement for the town.
Yeah, and it, and it, the, the length of the merge is a little hard to visualize because we have a, an acceleration taper, so it almost looks like you have two angles. But the full merge distance, actually, if you look at the match line A, it goes, it goes south of the next driveway south. It's, it's, it's a, it's a very generous distance.
Mr. Rec?
When the traffic study was done, we're talking about the stupidity factor, was the truck traffic that comes along Klein taken into consideration because there is a significant uptick in truck traffic? I'm talking dump trailers, all sorts of truck traffic coming through there. I understand the idea is to get as many vehicles across 30 as possible, but the stupidity factor comes in when the semis decide to stay in that left lane and then all the cars try to race them across 30 and then cut in essentially in front of the entrance to the, the property, where you're gonna have other people trying to think, oh, I'm gonna beat this truck across and not see the car. And then we're gonna have collision after collision because there is, when I say there's an uptick in truck traffic, there is an uptick in truck, truck traffic along that route there. And when I was, we just recently repaved this street, when I was out there taking all the markings and everything like that, those people are extremely impatient and once they see that through lane, you're just gonna see people beelining and cutting, 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 and we're gonna have, I just feel like we're gonna have way more accidents than, than what we're gonna want because stupidity factor, impatience, all of those play into it on top of whatever you guys found with your, your traffic study. I don't, I just don't see how having two lanes coming across, this is just my personal opinion, is going to alleviate anything because once those accidents start to happen, then you're blocking all of traffic. Because there are going to be accidents right in front of that entrance. I, I can almost guarantee it because people are going to be super impatient right there. Then there's the, the fact that people do, and like you said, they're not supposed to go through, there's a sign out there that says no U-turn at that median. There's people that do U-turns right now to get into the gas station, so that's another thing.
That's an enforcement, that's an enforcement issue with the police department.
Yes, but again, you can't be out there enforcing it all of the time. There's the stupidity factor that needs to be taken into consideration here. I don't know, I'm not, you're the traffic engineer, it's just thoughts in my head that came up when I'm seeing this and it just, to me and being out there, I don't see how this is gonna really work all that well.
I think two lanes is much better than one.
Yeah, I, I.
It's just concerns of mine from being out there and working that section of road and seeing it, seeing it with my eyes. I just, I see the impatience, I see the stupidity and opening up another lane and then cutting it back down, I don't see it.
So I wish there was a way to, to factor in stupidity in a, in a traffic model. There isn't unfortunately. The one thing that, it is unique, you do not see two through lanes through an intersection going back to one very often, but the only time you do see them is a situation like this, where you have a major route that hogs all the green time and you have enough cars on the local route to warrant a solution like this. So I, while I, we can't quantify behavioral norms, we, we can quantify truck traffic that comes up in our counts and we can factor it into the, the models. But the one thing I do know today is that every time the green light turns for Klein, because Endot controls the traffic signal, it's linked all the way through Lake County, only 11 to 13 cars can get through on a green light. I, I watched it for an hour myself. And in the PM peak hour, more than 13 cars come down Klein Avenue on the north leg and get a red light. So that's why we get the problem we have is that there's, there's 16, 17 cars, 15, more than 13 cars every two minutes are, are coming to the traffic light when only 13 at most can get through. And so we get our, we get the backup. The only thing I do know is that this solution will change the number 13 to 26 and that's gonna be more than our arriving and it's gonna reduce the congestion problem. I can't quantify your other concerns, but I can quantify that and that this will help that.
And it will also help the Klein Avenue Fire Station to be able to get fire trucks through there and ambulances.
Correct.
Other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman? For Neil or Denise, does the town need to purchase additional property to the north side of Klein?
No, we, we have sufficient right of way on the north side of Klein Avenue to move over the right turn westbound lane and add that additional southbound lane through the entirety of the area, just directly north of 75th to the right of way of US 30.
Other questions, concerns? So you're gonna need to get with staff as far as doing a re-subdivision and a list of variances that might be required. And then I would recommend another study session at least, you know, before you, you know, as, as we're moving along to keep us in the loop, but I, I like, I like the concept, I like, I like the layout. You, you're doing the best with a, with a bad situation, you know, giving up some, some land there to get us another lane and I, I think it's gonna be a good, a good addition. But like I said, get, get with Denise to work on doing a re-subdivision and what variances you might, might be looking for. Anybody have anything else? Mr. Simstad?
I think you've got it covered. I probably should have patented the stupidity factor, would have made me a couple bucks tonight.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you're, you have pretty much everything on site already, so I just, you know, the concern maybe with those other buildings with, with flood, floodway, but with that front building starting, it looks, looks good. Anything from staff?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any correspondence? We are adjourned.